...our president in the public city council meetings to assist the chairman and present an order. If any person is ordered to withdraw or leave the meeting by the mayor slash chair and refuses, that person can be cited and firmly charged with disowning conduct. The Harvey Police can escort the person out of the building. If a person refuses to leave and physically resists, the Harvey Police, that person can be charged with resisting arrest. Under Illinois law, "resisting", arrest is defined as knowingly resisting or obstructing the performance by one known to the person as a peace officer, firefighter, or correctional officer, institution employed, or unauthorized acts within his or her official capacity. This constitutes a Class A misdemeanor under seven twenty I O C S five slash thirty-one to act upon resisting or obstructing a peace officer, firefighter, or correctional institution employed. The statute requires that the act of resisting must involve some physical act that imposes an obstacle that may impede, hinder, interrupt, prevent, or delay the performance of officers duties. Examples include struggling, wrestling, going to death, or physically aiding a third party to avoid arrest. Illinois law explicitly states that a person is not authorized to use force to resist an arrest by a known peace officer, even if the arrest believed to be in fact unlawful. Resisting is even an unlawful arrest by a known officer in violation of the statute, People vs. Borders, two thousand twenty. Also, anyone that chooses to video record, we ask you to do so in the media area that is designated back there.
All present persons, can you mark yourself present, please? We have one more roll call. You can mark yourself present.
All right, we have a call for president. Next, we have the education pledge of allegiance. We do not recognize. Have you thought of God, come to me, to have a relationship with you, knowing that through that relationship, all things are possible, that we can do all things through the Christ who strengthens us, that we know that you are all that we need, we can't need anything else. Well, have you followed the lead? Thank you so much. Because the words that are coming out of my mouth, they could not be enough. As Scripture says, "And to watch him cry out, 'Lord', that wouldn't even be enough to thank you and to glorify you for everything that you have done. But all we can do coming before you is mercifully and humbly say, 'Thank you, God. Thank you so much for being in you who you are.' Fifth ward.
Motion. Say, items. The new business from five, six, and seven is on the scope.
Five, six, and seven.
Yes, sir.
Do you need a second to that? If there is a second, five, six, and seven, there's a motion to obvias five, six, and seven under new business.
So.
There's a motion, and then we got a two so moves, so. Okay, so I got a motion by the fifth, second by the sixth. Before the, before the ordinance, Ron the clerk is putting together that, just so you know what that is. That's Resolution five is a special use approval in real estate sale agreement with highest ground LLC regarding the property located at one sixty-nine fifty South Hopps, Austin. Six is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Nora Retail LLC at one sixty-nine fifty Hopps Street. And seven is a revolution approving a redevelopment agreement for J and T Group of Illinois LLC Comprehensive Housing Program. So we can go ahead and vote. Motion carries. Okay, so when it comes time after finishing four, you will come with us, five, six, and seven. Okay? Yeah, to number four, on our agenda, is retirement acknowledgement of Robert Brown, thirty-six years and ten months. And he is one of the retirees for the city of Harvey, where he is. We have a, uh, well, they told me to make it short, so I'm gonna follow instructions as far as this is concerned. Uh, so I'll just read it. Having lasting impact on our community. Thank you for your endeavoring, dedication, and excellence. It's December of two thousand twenty-four. So if you would be so kind, my friend, as to come up and receive your plaque. Anybody else come on? So for those who don't necessarily know, um, Robert's contributions, it's probably like a lot of other employees here at the city of Harvey, him that. You have a lot of people that's doing a lot of work, and you don't, we not necessarily see that person, you may necessarily hear from that person, but you see the work that they do. You know, it's kind of like the, it's like the elves in that story about the cobbler and the shoes. You know, when the elves came in the middle of the night and they did all the work, and the cobbler had brand new shoes and didn't know how he, how he got it. Well, if that were, if we were to liken that to what we are today, he's one of those elves. He's one of those people that come out there to constantly get the work done, uh, knowing that at times it can be thankless, but he does it anyway. He's a Harvey resident, too. Okay, so that's, that, uh, six ward graduate. So that, that's another thing, you know, and he cares for the city in which he lives. So, um, we'll be doing some other things for him as time goes on, but thank you. Thank you again, Robert. We really appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor. And so, uh, next item is approval of ordinances and resolutions for the city of Harvey. Um, five A low business, find the new business, B one. An ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes for the city of Harvey fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand twenty-four and ending May, excuse me, ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-five. This ordinance approves the budget for the fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand twenty-four and ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we have a motion by the first, and a second by the third. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, you can cast your votes. Motion carries.
That is ordinance number three five zero two.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance levying taxes in the city of Harvey for the fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand twenty-four and ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-five. This ordinance approves the amount of taxes to be levied upon all property within the city of Harvey, subject to taxation for fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand twenty-four and ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, I see a motion from the third, the second by the first. Is there any debate?
No debate, sir. Please, council, always make a statement.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we had a finance meeting.
Of course, sir.
Yeah. So we had a finance meeting, we had our opportunity to have a little discussion with you from the public that was here. Uh, Alderman Key was here as well. Uh, I want to say that number one, I'm proud that once again, we're not raising taxes. Uh, I want, I want the public to know that, however, we're not your only taxing body. So please get your tax bill and look at it, because we are not your only taxing body. There are other things that impact that that have nothing to do with the city of Harvey. But we're dedicated to not raising taxes. Uh, we understood the budget, we took the opportunity to talk to our co-c controller and ask a bunch of questions. Uh, I hate that you missed it, but if you still got questions, reach out to your Alderman, reach out to me, come to another finance meeting, we'll ask any questions you have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And so before we, um, do the vote, first of all, I second what, uh, the fifth ward ordinance said as far as the tax levy is concerned. I think it was in June of this year, um, we collectively made a pledge to our residents that we would not increase the levy for twenty twenty-five. Taxes have been a very serious and important issue for many of our homeowners. Uh, we do have, uh, some commercial businesses that have refused to pay their taxes and that have not paid their taxes for almost twenty years. Um, that portion is usually shifted over to the residential homeowners. But we do not want to put any more burden on our homeowners, um, regardless of the situation, so we're not increasing the levy. So when, once again, you look at your tax bill, um, that should be coming out, I think, in February. Um, keep in mind that there are fourteen other taxing bodies on your bill, um, so that you, you can figure out, uh, if you see an increase, you'll know that the increase is not coming from the city of Harvey. So that being said.
Mayor, can I hear Jake, just one more point?
Chair recognizes the six ward.
I was, uh, this was in the month of June, uh, and when you had your press conference and you made the initiative to, uh, tell the public that we were not going to be increasing any taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Uh, we were hoping that other municipalities would follow suit after what Harvey has taken the initiative to do. Uh, don't know if that's occurred yet, but I'd like to say that this administration should be commended for taking that initiative not to increase any property tax. We, we decided that we would do it for twenty twenty-five. We may be able to do it for twenty twenty-six, we gotta see how it works out in twenty twenty-five first. And I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm proud to be a part of that decision-making process, uh, that we decided to go forth with.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we, and normally we wouldn't do all this talking, so, but this is such an important issue to the homeowners, um, that, you know, if we can get it, we only collect fifty-two percent of our property taxes. So just imagine if you were getting paid a hundred dollars a week and then your boss came to you and said, "Well, I can't give you a hundred dollars, instead I have to give you fifty-two dollars." And now you have to go home and figure out how you're going to operate, um, and function off of that amount. Um, so we only collect fifty-two percent. So if we can get those who owe us taxes, taxes, specifically, once again, those, those commercial properties that owe us taxes, we actually may be collecting more and be able to do just that, so let's, uh, be hopeful that that will be the case at some time in the future. So, that being said, we have the motion, we have the second, you can cast your vote. Motion carries.
That is ordinance three five zero three.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance establishing remedies available to the city to address businesses operating in violation of the city's code. This ordinance amends chapter five dash zero two of the city code by adding a new subsection C, authorizing the city to seek an injunction, temporary restraining order, an abatement, or other appropriate actions to enjoin, abate, or stop any violation of this chapter. There is a motion by the third, second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you can cast your votes. Motion carries.
That is ordinance number three five zero four.
Next is the, um, item is the omnibus of five, items number five, number six.
Where's getting four? Four wasn't a part of the.
Oh, my apologies. Um, excuse me, an ordinance, before we get there, next item is an ordinance approving a special use permit for D Lopez Tire Shop at one six two zero three South Hostage Street. There was a motion by the first, a second by the sixth. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you can cast your vote.
And that is ordinance number three five zero five.
Thank you very much, and thank you for catching me on that. Um, next item is the omnibus of numbers five, six, and seven. Okay. So there's omnibus of five, six, and seven, we have a motion by the six ward, excuse me, and the second by the third. Is there any debate? Hearing none, or there actually shouldn't be. Um, you may cast your vote. Pass, um, is the resolution, ordinance, any resolution?
Yes, resolution for item five is three zero nine five. Uh, number six is ordinance number three five zero six, and number seven is resolution number three zero nine six.
Thank you very much. Next on the, um, agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the ordinance. And no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. No speaker may go in, his or her time to another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaigning or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time, and the council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff during regular business hours. So first, we will have Ryan Sinwelski, followed by Mazur Er.
All right, good evening, everybody. Uh, many of you know this was the prime of the Harvey Historical Society. Many of you know about our campaign to stop the mayor's horrible Central Park project on Merle Avenue. We are fighting to save people's homes and the historic Ascension Church campus at our hundred fifty-third and Merle from demolition. Just when we thought it couldn't get worse, it did. On November seventh, a group of us went to what we thought was an M W R D board meeting. Instead, we saw a circus. It was a spectacle worthy of a lyric opera in Chicago. Mayor Clark, Carrie Steele, and M W R D staff coordinated the biggest, most big show of support for a project we've ever seen. Mayor Clark used city employees on city time to lie to our Harvey seniors to get them to this meeting. Joe Wington, the mayor's senior activities director, and my former alderman coordinated, uh, the event and even spoke in favor of taking other seniors' homes. After the meeting, several of the seniors said they would never want other seniors' homes to be taken, but they just, they had no idea what was going on. They were promised a meal, a pleasant outing by the mayor and the city and the city staff. At least nine of the people who commented in favor of displacing Harvey residents were City of Harvey employees and/or people owing favors to Mayor Clark. They were literally paid to be there and put on a show by the boss, Christopher Clark, all to take our seniors' homes and demolish one of the first racially-integrated Catholic churches. Alder guestman, Brubinsky, Smith, Randall L, and Rogers. What are you getting from Clark? That's enough to make you ignore widows who are literally crying and pleading with you not to take their homes in their final years. Randall L doesn't even show up to most meetings, but he was at this one. Rogers doesn't answer any questions on the finance committee, but he was there. What is in it for you? We already have parks. We already have a park district. If you don't need a new one, if this is about flood relief, how about we start just sweeping the streets so the stormwater can drain? How about cleaning out and repairing the sewers we have? How about catching puddles that are big enough to destroy your car? If you can't even maintain what we have now, why in the world would we trust you, you, to build something new? I'm talking to you, Ms. Smith. Then, at the end of the meeting, Ms. Steele dares to tell us that this is democracy. Okay, so let me get this straight. You and the mayor pay city staff with our money to deceive our most vulnerable, lonely seniors when they look like they support putting other seniors out of their homes. Did you also tell those seniors that there's nothing stopping from Clark trying to take their homes next? Did you think about that, seniors? I bet you didn't mention that to them. Did you tell them that the M W R D gave you Mrs. Brumfield's house after acquiring it? I thought this was an M W R D project. Why does the city of Harvey now own all those homes on Merle? On what planet is this democracy? This sounds like dictator Clark is desperate to get his hands on that five million dollar FEMA grant at any cost. Why, Mr. Mayor, are you so desperate for this money? You don't need more money to waste, and you don't need to displace residents or demolish historic buildings. You need to do your job and be accountable to the people. I also have to mention, I was here earlier for the finance meeting, and they made everything sound so glowing, but to remind people, we haven't seen anything about the finances on paper, so please change.
So it's you, next is Mazur Er, followed by Haring Pitt.
Hello, it was Mazur Er, in form trustee of the Harvard Public Library. Uh, I have a couple of concerns, uh, in regards to the last city council meeting where, uh, Kobe Chapman, Kobe Chapman was called out to be censured, uh, by Dominique Randewell. Uh, I'd just like to throw out something. Uh, the Roberts Rule of Order is there for a reason, and it's not to be misused for the convenience of aldermen who don't agree with it or the mayor of how it's arranged. Um, this is crazy. Uh, whenever she asked a question, she shut down. Uh, the votes are shoved through, the motion is made, you got to take a computer pad thing up there where you're shoving things through where a question can't be asked. Here's the thing, you guys, you all draw attention to your own self when somebody asks a question. What's so bad about answering the question? Just answer it. You're gonna vote the way that you want to vote anyway. So just answer the question, practice the transparency, don't violate Roberts' Rule of Order, and, um, and then things will be a whole lot better for the residents, because all we want to know is what's going on. And everything is like under lock and key all the time. This, this is not what I voted for, this is not what I want. Uh, also, to piggyback on that, uh, the censure was made. You know, Dominique Randewell, uh, you, I don't know what you're taking, I don't know if it's medicine or it's a controlled substance, but you got up in the meeting and you hollered out, "I gotta pee", and they had to stop the meeting. That's not the way that a meeting is supposed to be run. You, you could have went up to the mayor, instead I need, uh, to, uh, for you to, to, to stop the meeting for a minute so I can go out and come back. Now, that is something that somebody needs to be censured on. You know, uh, I hope that wasn't your ideal, to, to do the censure that somebody else told you to do it. Uh, and then at least I could just say, "Well, you're under the influence of, because you know that..." that probably your money for, uh, special events with the city would be withheld or something like that. But you guys gotta be better. You just, you're not thinking for yourself. That's basically what it is. Uh, the levy, the 4.99% that Cook County allows you to, uh, to charge every year. I'd like to see those numbers. I'd like to see if you get a minus 4.99% from, 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 uh, last year's levy to this year's levy and begun it. To be sure that what you say is actually true, because I don't believe it.
Next is Irene Fittin, followed by Jerelyn Harris.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Irene Fittin. Now, there I wanted to, oh, for my own. And the mayor appreciates you, which I want my job.
Thank you. Wait, hold on, no, 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 no. No? Absolutely not. Thank you very much. No, then you can, you can talk to the national media. Okay, and thank them. You did agree that, did you, uh, left you? Okay, or maybe put you out there. Next up is Jerelyn Harris, followed by John Brandon.
Good evening to the honorable Christopher Clark and this council. I want to thank you all for all the efforts that you have been doing to try to bring this city back out of the dust. I was at your last council meeting, and I saw elected officials, my block club captain, as more citizens holding inflammatory green poster signs and citing inflammatory comments on these signs. I am so glad that you use your power as my service to stop the confusion. I want to say something, I'm gonna say it twice, and I'm gonna say it slow. In the Holy Bible, in James, chapter three, three to eighteen, tell you where wisdoms come from. James three, chapter three, verses three to eighteen. Tell you and let you know what the Holy Bible says where wisdom come from. It can come from heaven, and it can come from the devil. That's James three, chapter thirteen, chapter three, thirteen to eighteen. Go read for yourself and see what that demonstration reflected. Did it reflect heaven, or did it, uh, reflect the devil? I want you to keep on standing up for the citizens of Harvey. I was elected official as a trustee of the Harvey Public Library District for six years. I've been in this community since May sixth, nineteen sixty-nine, and in my home since August first, nineteen seventy-five. Thank you for being a refugee for me and my children, because I came from Chicago, born and raised. Thank you. Keep up the good work. And I'm sorry, please forgive me. Please forgive me for being elected, coming to this board meetings. Please forgive me. I've been dealing with some medical problems, but you're gonna see this real soon. God bless you all. We believe in God, and God we trust.
Thank you. Next is, um, John Brandon. We're gonna bring the, we'll bring the mic over there if you want to, darling. Okay. We're gonna bring the mic to you, though.
I want to applaud you and the city council for saving the taxes from the businesses that have done it any years past. All we wanted to do was say thank you, continue that work, and hopefully, whatever support you need from, uh, community citizens, we will be organized and in, in your support. But you know, like with every mayor, uh, every, uh, alderman, uh, person, we appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. Next is Ruby Duncan-Hugh, followed by Suzanne Hayne.
I'm not going to let my words be invaded. We have to do better. We have to support it. We live here, and many of us who pay taxes. Those that don't hear my word, get it together. We cannot run a city without money. And it has to be done in an orderly way and understood what is going to be done. We work very hard, all of us. I'm going to say it whatever way you do it. You're out there late. I have been a citizen of Harvey for fifty-five years. I have seen it come, and I've seen it go. But this is the best demonstration that I have lived in where there has been some type of communication. And I'm talking about written communication. We've never had it before. I'm saying, go and look at what you're doing. Go and plop into the fields and see what's been done. See what has been accomplished. Don't always look at the critical parts that you want to see and you're grouped together. We don't need no clicks unless you're clicking together. And this has not been done since the second part of this administration. We need to make the change, and we, as a whole, will do it. We will never go down. We will never be belittled, belittled over and over again. And the need to make the light of us as a whole, no. Our mayor is excellent in comparison to what we have had. Now, you might be looking at one thing, but I'm looking at another, and there are many others that are looking at the other side. Go out there in yourself and see what you're doing. Do you have a car wash, a new car wash? Do you have anything on Dixie Highway from one forty-nine to one hundred and sixty-ninth street that has been repaid? Do you have the law that has been built? That was our tax payers' dollars, hard-owning at least. And that's what we need to be looking at. Looking at the net, at the positive things, not always at the negative things. That's the wrong way to go. I've been here long enough in this life to know the good and the bad. And I can see more good than I can see bad. We have to work together. Stop being critical. Get out of here. Stop criticizing more than nothing. Love more than nothing. That is what life is all about.
Next up is Suzanne Hayne.
Good evening, everyone. To our honorable mayor, uh, city council, and the city's administrative staff. My name is Suzanne Hayne. I reside at one forty-nine thirty-two Cooper Avenue. And I'd just like to thank the mayor and his administrative staff for all the great work that they're doing. They are doing such a great job that I volunteer my time. Because I would pay to work elbow-to-elbow with these people, because they did it, and they get the job done. I see it every day. And I am proud to say, after living in Harvey almost forty years, that we finally have an administration that is moving forward and doing something for the residents. So I applaud you for your work. Keep up the good work. I don't know about the rhetoric that Ryan speaks. I don't know about what Meserve is talking about. Because if he knew anything about the Roberts Rule of Order, you know, when you come to a city council, it's just all about business. You should not be disrupting the order of business, because you can't move forward if you can't get anything passed. Y'all have a blessed night.
Thank you. Next is the mayor coming. So, we started off this meeting with me praying and being grateful and thankful of God for everything that he has done. I hope some of you absorb that, um, and internalize it. Because it guides my remarks right now. There's a lot of things that I could say about some of the things that are saying, uh, negative toward this city. I don't really care about the things that you say is negative towards me, because once you get it, that's like wild wolf and ducks back. You don't understand what's going on, who you dealing with. First of all, you're dealing with a steel worker. Okay, that's number one. First, first, first career steel worker. Okay, we build iron tough. You're also dealing with an attorney. I know a lot of, a lot of you guys, depending on, you know, what the situation is, you don't want to recognize the fact that your, that your mayor is actually educated and actually practices as an attorney, which I don't know why, because I know I would be proud of it, but, but the simple fact is, you can't get there. Can't do it. So you might as well stop, because you're gonna lose. But when I sit back and I look at all the, wait, hold on, beg, beg, beg. And then I got him a full arm. And the full arm is what protects me. Okay? It keeps me from all of the naysayers and negativity and the things that people would want to do. Those principalities, those powers, and places that are unseen. Yeah, he got me. So the only advice I can give, it's the, it's the advice that I give a lot, is if you don't know him, get to know him. If you know him, have a relationship with him. Give him a call up every now and then. Tell him what you want. Okay? But we have seen some tremendous things happen in this past year. Uh, and I think it's so many, so much, and so many that, um, we would probably be here for another kind of meeting if I were to do everything that we've done. But the first thing I want to do is I want to thank this council. Through it all, then and then, you guys have, have performed in a way that honestly, I have to honestly say, I didn't even expect myself to be there to get, but we have learned, you know, how to work together as a council to do better for our, um, our community, so thank you so much. I also want to thank all of our departments and the leadership in those departments, because, once again, we just mentioned that, one, we collect fifty-two percent of our taxes. Two, is that we still did not increase the levy of taxes on our residents. And even though we operate with a little bit, those departments and those department heads are able to get a lot done. And I want to give you an example of that. Um, this past week, I had an opportunity to go out to the residents at the Jesse Jackson Junior East Building, which is on one hundred and fifty-first, right off of Rowan. And, um, and it's not the fact that we had a really good time. They tell you I was dancing with them. But they asked, uh, a question. They said, hey, look, can you cut down all of the brush that's behind the building? And as soon as I left the building, I went straight to Public Works. And I talked to Rick, and I talked to Crystal, and they said that they would be on it right away. And the very next, I was able to report to the third world owner that they would be on it the very next day. They started on it the very next day. Um, and has done a tremendous job, so much so, that I've gotten calls from those residents and from others who've seen it, just amazed at what we have done. Um, but speaking of the Jesse Jackson Junior East and West Building, that is another thing to be grateful for, because, what was it? The previous term, there was thirty-five million that was spent by Pola Hood, Cook County, um, by working with this administration on the Jesse Jackson, excuse me, on the YMCA building on one hundred and fifty-fifth and Central. That whole building was overhauled and redone as far as the residential spaces are concerned. And it improved the quality of life of the people who lived there. While then Pola, the owners of that building, they're also the owners of the Jesse Jackson Junior East and West Building. And they made a promise that after they finished the Center Street building, that they would be going over to Jesse Jackson Junior East and West next. And that's exactly what they did. And the reason why I was there the other day was because we were celebrating the completion of that project. And they had a live band in Michael Jackson, if, uh, personally had come out. Um, and we had a chance to talk to the, the residents, of course, the third world owner. And I think Joe, you were there too, weren't you, Joe? Um, was there as well, to celebrate, um, improving the quality of life for people, specifically seniors and up here. We also recently celebrated the, the reopening of the one hundred and forty-seventh street metro station. Uh, and we're hoping to see more travel through there. One hundred and fifty-fourth street is, is very close to its completion. And for those who, who, yeah, my mother used to tell me, no good deed goes unpunished. I keep trying to push against that. We started the work in, most, sometime, I think it was the second week of September, is when the work on, uh, one hundred and fifty-fourth street started. And that work is almost complete. Um, I'd say probably in the next few weeks, is that correct? Um, it should be, it should be complete. But I want to make note that this is a project that has not been done for over one hundred years. Okay? One hundred years. So when we went to do the work, we found the bricks that were still there. The charlie tracks that were still there from a time long gone in the City of Harvey. And so it took a little bit extra time and extra money, am I correct, to be able to make those corrections? But that is something that we are grateful for, and we know that can get done. We know that if we, as a, as a community and as a council, stick together, we can move forward and get things done. Next door, Harvey Lofts. Okay? Other than the fact that they have a supply chain issue right now going on, the lofts will be open soon. They should have been open by the end of October, but they had a supply chain issue. Now, for those who don't understand what that means, it means that they had ordered some parts because of, um, how things changed after COVID. You know, you don't necessarily get things instantaneously anymore. So they are waiting on, uh, those parts to come in, and once those parts come in, they should be there. Also Dixie Highway. Dixie Highway, uh, was redone. And for those of you who have not taken a ride, please take it, right? Because it's smooth as silk. Okay? And they also added more ADA compliance to, um, to Dixie Highway as well. I'm gonna leave it at that. Um, but I do want to do, pull up, pull out a few more things. In twenty nineteen, we stopped the sale of liquor at five o'clock in the morning. There were so many people believing or dying, who, who thought that that was an insane idea. We stopped selling it until five o'clock in the morning, and we reduced the sales to twelve midnight. And at twelve midnight, all businesses that were selling liquor had to close. Um, except for, of course, the gas stations, which were still allowed to stay open, but were not allowed to sell liquor. I believe that has had a tremendous impact on our city. Okay? Um, Um, both socially and spiritually, if I can say so myself. But this year, and because of it, we, we, we started to see crime slowly but surely go down. You know? Um, and I remember that every night in my house, I used to have to go to bed to some gunshots. It's like I couldn't go to school if I hadn't had those gunshots in my life. But that has changed. And it's changed because the police department has made some changes, but it's also changed because of what the council initially took and did back then at that particular point in time. And so, once again, I want to let you know, homicides are down thirty-three percent. Burglaries are down fifty-two percent. Kidnappings are down fifty-seven percent. Um, domestics are down eleven percent and batteries are down sixteen percent. So at the beginning of the year, there'll probably be a Chicago Tribune or maybe, um, a daily South Town article that probably is gonna try to say something negative about the city of Harvey because they always try to classify us that way. But, but continually keep in mind that crime is going down in the city of Harvey. It, it's not just the police, but it's also the people. The people are paying more attention to what's going on in their neighborhood. They're starting to have a certain degree of pride that says if I see something, I'm going to say something. So I would encourage everyone to do so. And then finally, if you do not read our wonderful newsletters, um, I think someone mentioned that we do it in writing. You have the newsletter that you can read that comes out monthly. You have a re- recap of the council meetings that come in your wallet bill that you can read to find out what's going on. Um, but this year, we also instituted with our community cases department, the video newsletter. So you can take that same newsletter that you read and if you go to our YouTube page, when will they be able to start to sign up? Is anything on our, on our website? Or you can go to our website at cityofharveyil.gov. That's cityofharveyil.gov. And you can sign up to receive our monthly newsletter digitally. And you'll know when it comes out and you'll be able to see the video newsletter as well. And it's quite entertaining, um, and quite informative. So I'm gonna leave it at that, um, no, can't leave it at that. Finally, I want to thank all of the residents who have been extremely patient, who has given, who has given their support throughout the year. Um, those who have sent cards and letters, well wishes, those who stopped by, um, meet the mayor. Some not to ask for anything, but just to sometimes bring us cookies and muffins or stuff that I have no business eating. Um, but they did that because they cared. Um, those things never go overlooked and I just want you to know that we, uh, we greatly appreciate all of our residents. We will continue into twenty twenty-five to, to do even, somebody said we got to do better. We're gonna do better. We're gonna do more. And for whoever did say that we should do better, we hope that you join us in doing just that. So, on that note, I will end my comment. And wait a minute, hold on. Yeah. I didn't get to say anything last time, that's why I took a little more time today. But, um, excited when the agenda is motion to adjourn? Oh, no, no, wait a minute. I want to think for you guys. So, a family member of, of mine, we like to say that God is always in the blessing business. And business is good. And every time, I'm telling you, talk about that ram in the bush, man, he got ram after ram after ram. So I'm gonna read this to you, um, and we can end it on this because I need you to do something else for me, council. What I hold in my hand is a resolution for improvement under the highway code from the Illinois Department of Transportation. It just came in the other day, so we weren't able to, we didn't have enough time to get it on this agenda because it just came in. But it is for continued improvements of one hundred and fifty-fourth street, uh, from Route sixteen sixty-four, Broadway to Wood Street. Um, it says a full depth roadway reconstruction, new curbs, other sidewalks improvements, storm sewer improvements, rain infrastructure, storm water bump outs, because there's additional work that needs to be done after we get the asphalt down and everything like that. So there is hereby appropriated, I'm gonna say it again, this is the resolution for improvement under the Illinois highway code through the Illinois Department of Transportation, that there is hereby appropriated the sum of one billion six hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. No, no good behavior going on. Don't do that, don't do that. So, um, yeah, yeah, talk about rams in the bush, okay? And y'all gotta, y'all gotta understand, when you got a hundred sixty-five million dollars worth of deficit, when you got fifty-two percent of your taxes are being collected, when there's so many financial challenges in the city, it's things like this that we really need, uh, that make, that make a big difference. So what we will be doing is, we will be asking for you to return on Monday because we need to have another special meeting in order to deal with this particular issue. Um, it will be brief, quick, but the bottom line is, we do need to get this passed. We would have handed on the agenda for it today and we had received it in time. But it just shows you that, you know, we have the, the support, we have the relationships. We have others out that are advocating for us, advocating for our city, um, so that we can give lessons uh, like this. So I think that's a pretty valuable lesson there, so. Uh, on that note, if there is nothing else for the agenda to order, to receive a motion to adjourn. Motion by this second by the first, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none, we stand adjourned at eight oh eight, my favorite hip hop instrument. Thank you. All right, have a great day. I'm Brad Wayne and we will see you soon.
Did you come? But yeah, it's, it's pretty cray cray. I better grab my coat. Did I leave anything over there? No. I got all my stuff right now. I almost, I don't want to forget my coat.
At least twelve. There were at least twelve.
I was gonna say, did, did you guys test the, did you catch the setup?
Catch the what?
The setup? All the setup. This is just like the M-Dog Garden meeting. It was exactly, exactly the same thing.
I was telling Shelby that, um, we bear cough, took a stab at the assignment to the public comments. And I think it was after we reserved, signed up.
I'll check my video. Yeah.
And they, they weren't, they didn't stop by the table.
I'm gonna check my video because...
I know they did.
Because they, they have to follow their own rules, do they? Yeah, I was gonna say, because there's a lot of stuff that's not as it should be. Where is Tracy? Okay, let me make sure Tracy's here. Tracy? Does the lady that's both, oh, does, is she, does she live in, um, Tracy's girl, the lady that's talking to Tracy's girl?
I have no idea. I don't know who she is.
I think she is.
Well, she said she was on the library board for years. I'm sure you can research her.
Mm, right.